I started on this venture. I started out with a small group. There was a lot of work that went into it. A lot of work on all the adults getting ready, but the students did a lot of the work and met something. After you do that, I'll, I want to thank the students.
They have to do presentations. Year one was last year in the prep and the things that they had to do. Year two. One of the students has qualified. And we went into this with a scholarship with BOSI. First, we were going to do it on our own. Then we talked to them. So we all, we had to write a proposal to the state to qualify for the seal of bilinguism. And it goes on the transcript and they give special awards at graduation. So we were pre-keeping this year, 21 of these, which includes our valedictorian and salutatorian as recipients. And in this day and age of 2019, we're making great gains. Heather Pukta is the department chair. She's front, giving this.
Change the password.
How are you?
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands. All right, good evening, everybody. Sorry for the delay. We were enjoying our nice retiree reception this evening. Before we start the meeting, I would just like to say that Mr. Keegan, Mr. Schustah, and Ms. McDonald are excused from tonight's meeting. I'd like to have a moment of silence for Marion Lilly, a former employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. We have three presentations this evening. The first one is our class of 2019 valedictorian salutatorian.
I will start with our salutatorian. Gabriel Kahn, if you would come up, please. While at CNS, Gabriel has been involved within the school and the community. He has been on the baseball team since eighth grade and is one of two senior editors of the yearbook. He volunteers weekly at the American Legion, is on the Executive Board of National Honor Society. Gabriel will be attending Syracuse University this fall, where he'll be studying mechanical or bioengineering. Our salutatorian, Gabriel Kahn. Our valedictorian, Julia Rupp. Julia is an active member of her school community. During her years at CNS, she ran cross-country and is a member of the Executive Board of the National Honor Society. Additionally, Julia is a member of the Chamber, Pops, and Pitt orchestras and is the president of the Triem Honor Society. She has also participated in the all-county, all-area state orchestra festivals during her time at CNS. Julia will be attending the University of Pittsburgh to study microbiology and pursue a pre-med track to become a doctor of neurology or internal medicine. Our valedictorian, Julia Rupp.
Thank you. Our next presentation this evening is the New York State Seal of Bilinguism Recognition. We have Heather Pukta here that's going to be giving out several awards.
You can come right on up. Just want to start off by saying the Seal of Bilinguism, this is year two, and it was a brainchild. I know Mr. Leclerc saw it somewhere on the state website and was interested. And as we looked at the criteria, which is daunting, there was a lot, there were a lot of hurdles that we had to go through. And the staff looked up what needed to be presented to the state, and we met those requirements. And we had seven students last year in year one meet all of the requirements for the Seal of Bilinguism, which goes on their transcript, which is an added piece when they go to college. And there is a medal, a pen, and certificate. So the staff took up the challenge and looked, what do we need to do for students to increase getting the Seal of Bilinguism? And today, we're going to have Mr. Leclerc and Ms. Pukta present awards for 21 students. We've tripled the number of students meeting that criteria, and that's only in year two. So as we progress, it's only going to get stronger. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Leclerc and Ms. Pukta.
So before I give, let Ms. Pukta take over and give you a little background on the Seal of Bilinguism, I just want to say first, I want to recognize all the students that have put in hard work that they put in for this project. I'd also like to thank my staff that are here tonight. Recognition. Ms. Pukta, she, when I proposed this to her, she did her, brought this idea with her and she needed a project to complete. And working with her, she put in hours.
Before I begin, there's a few people that I've... Spanish, Kimberly Doyle. Spanish, Anna Espinoza.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Leclerc.
Okay, next we have Donna Marie to present school accountability.
Okay, okay. So different, I know, that was kind of scary. So different format this year than we've had in previous years, and that's because of the new rules with ESSA accountability, which I don't remember. It was a couple of months ago where I came and kind of gave you a little primer on what the new rules were going to be with ESSA. So there is no quiz, and I'm not going to expect you to remember what anything was, but I'm going to have to reteach you about school accountability. Remember that this is always on the year prior. We just finished our testing cycle and we don't have those results back. And I never know when we're going to get them because the dates are a lot. But this is on the 1718 school year. Okay. So ESSA stands for the Every Student Succeeds Act. You might remember we used to have NCLB, the No Child Left Behind. You know, this is the latest iteration. And what's staying the same, I thought we talked for a second about that. We are still responsible for student scores, performance in ELA, in math. Those are three through eight, and science in fourth and eighth grade, and then our graduation rate. So some things that are new. New categories, brave new world. So the first thing is this idea of a composite performance. And what they do is they combine all of the tests together. The ELA, the math, the science, and in the high school, even the social studies. So we actually are very happy as social studies, I'm the director of social studies, very happy that social studies exams are now included in our accountability. So how they use the data is students that earn in Level 1, and that would be for the Regents, probably something between a 0 and 54. Might be numbers, or a Level 1 on the three-through-eight exams, you get no points. For a student that scores a 2, you get 1 point. For a student that scores a Level 3, you get 2 points. And lo and behold, something new, a student that scores a 4, you get 2.5 points. We never used to get anything for students that scored at mastery level, and now they give us a little extra bump. So that's a good sign. That's the composite performance. Growth is really only the fourth-through-eighth ELA and math, because they take the year prior and compare it to how the student did in the 1718 school year. So third grade, because that's the first year, doesn't really count. So it's four-through-eight. Growth. The ELP, English Language Proficient. We don't have a lot of students in those categories. They are growing, however. The only ones that had enough students taking exams that were ELP actually ended up being only Allen Road that had an accountability group. And we'll talk about that in a sec. And then progress. The progress tab is how our schools did compared to other schools in the state. And then CSI and TSI, those are two new categories. CSI stands for Comprehensive Support. And that's a school where the all-student category did not perform up to whatever the state levels were supposed to be. TSI is Targeted School Improvement, and that's where one subgroup in a school for several years in a row did not perform up to snuff. You are going to see that we do have one building that is a CSI, no buildings that are TSI. No, it's riveting, right? High school gets one additional category onto their school report, and it's the College Career and Civic Readiness. And what they do is they give you extra points for advanced designation diplomas, CTE-endorsed diplomas, AP scores of a 3 or better. Any student that has any of those things in their tab in school tool is going to give us 2 points. If a student earns a Regents diploma, that gives us 1 point. And we actually get a half a point for a student if they earn a GED, which never used to count before. So that's... So let's look at how we did. First is going to be the composite performance. Now composite performance is where they, they take the growth and the progress and they put them all together. And they use a mathematical formula. It's more important, I think, to look at the comparison of the schools than actually how they, you know, get you there. And you can see that in the composite performance, CNS is doing very, very well. Because they don't have the three-through-eight exams, there is no refusal rate, which does affect us somewhat. And students are taking Regents exams, and in our case, doing exceedingly well on them. So we're in the 4 range, which is the highest that we can be. And then you can see sort of across the board how the other buildings are doing. And then they separate it out by, here's the growth. So for an elementary school, we're only talking really about the fourth grade, because they take the third grade... ...comes from. So for all six of the elementaries, it's really only the fourth grade. Middle schools, it's going to be all of the grades. In the junior high, it's only the eighth grade. And again, in eighth grade, we have the largest number of refusals for any of the tests. And then CNS is, again, those Regents exams. And that's kind of goofy, because some of the Regents exams don't have a prior Regents exam. English only has one, so you really can't count it for growth, which is why the number ends up being a little bit lower here. Here's your combined score, and that's when they put the growth and the progress and a whole bunch of things together. And you can see that CNS and Cicero L. are both scoring at Level 4. And you will notice that Roxborough L. is a Level 1, and that's what got us on the CSI list. So Comprehensive School Improvement School, and I'll tell you a little bit about what we're doing under that. Here's our progress. Remember, this is when each of the schools is compared against all other schools in New York State. Here's chronic absenteeism. This is brand-new for us. We knew it was coming down the pike. We were warned a year or so ago. Didn't know exactly what it was going to look like, but here's the ruling. If a student shows up in school at least one day, they're counted. And if they miss 10% of the days that they are enrolled, then they are considered chronically absent. So if a student is here for the full 180 days and they miss 18, they are considered a chronically absent student. And you get graded on how many chronically absent students that you have. You will see that most of the elementaries are doing pretty well. Roxell, again, had a 1, which is another reason for CSI list. And then got the two middle schools, junior high and high. Just a couple of little pieces of additional information. Because Allen Road is the only school that has the subgroup for the ELP students, they did score a 2. So that you can see how they were progressing on the state exams. And then I did want to say that CNS scored a 4 in the College and Career Readiness. We really worked our tails off to make sure that everything was in the computer that would count for us, because we were not keeping AP scores in our student management system. And we hired some clerical and got them all in and proved that we were a very high-performing high school. So that was... Hard to see the whole thing. So areas of concern, all of the schools, except for Allen Road, actually had a subgroup that scored a Level 1. So that's something that we need to watch, because if they do it a couple of years in a row, they will end up as a TSI school. Now, a TSI school, because it's only a subgroup, means that they would have to write an internal plan. It's not something that state ed really, you know, comes in or looks at. It's just something that, kind of like a LA, what did we call those before? LAP plans, LAPs. They're to that kind of thing. And then Roxell, Rox Middle, and the junior high, out of all of the schools, they had the most subgroups that were a Level 1. So because of that, they're kind of on my watch list for maybe eventually being CSI schools, at least Rox Middle and the junior high, because that could easily fall into the all category. So Roxell is a CSI building. What does that mean and where are we going from here? So we met on May 16th. Matt Matola and I ran a group, his BPT, which included a whole bunch of teachers and all sorts of different levels. We looked at testing data and attendance data, because it was really their scores, their growth, and then their chronic absenteeism, which you can see in the chart. So we started to dive into what the reasons behind that were. They're going to have to write a plan, so we needed to look at the data. We're going to meet again on June 5th, and I just talked to Matt today. We're going to look at the RI and the MI data, which is our math and reading... ...show us, you know, any additional information. And then we will be meeting in July, and we're going to use all of the data... And then we will be meeting in July, and we're going to use all of the data that we kind of farm through these meetings. And we're going to write a plan. We have a consultant that's going to come in and work with us on that. Deadline for submitting that plan to State Ed is actually August 1st. We were able to get a bit of an extension so that we could go a little bit deeper.
Can they help you with the plans?
Well, they give you templates, and we did go to trainings. So, Matt and I went to Albany for a couple of days. Dan went as well. You know, they give you information, but.
Dr. Corliss Kaiser, the former superintendent FM, is part of the consultant team, and she will be assisting with looking at the data on July 10th and 11th in helping with the plan for August 1st.
That's not provided by the state. We actually had to use a school improvement plan. We're learning the new rules. They change it every couple of years, and this is the new. And what they did is they had so many schools that were falling into these categories that they really looked at the lowest 10% performance. And what I've heard is, you know, we really shouldn't be in these categories. I think we're going to be able to get out of them pretty quickly.
The state did come out for three days, and they did an observation, and they did offer suggestions, and they gave us a report and things to share with the building, some initial, what they call, quick wins.
Yes.
Things they can change immediately to help the building. And then they stated some short-term goals that they wanted the building to take a look at based on their three days of observation. And these were an outside consultant that the state hires, and then an internal person that goes from school district to schools district and does these evaluations. I sat in on the three days, and I would have to say it was more of a positive experience than a gotcha. And they sat and they interviewed parents, teachers, and students to talk about what they thought their needs were and the direction. So, they found that the, talking to the constituents and them having a say in kind of the improvement is helpful. And so, that's the new method that they're looking at.
We're going to be running a lot of surveys where we're, you know, asking parents to participate, students if they're of a certain age, and. Create the plans.
What is concerning, I mean, this school was in the LAP, was identified.
Rox Middle was a LAP building.
Oh, Rox Middle. I make sure that our.
Donna Marie, I just want to thank you. This is all-new territory. I know that you've gone to numerous trainings. Dan has joined you. It's very complicated, but you presented it in a way that was very easy to understand tonight. Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you. We have no comments from the audience tonight. Move into Board Committee reports and comments. Mary, anything?
Yes, so our last policy committee meeting of the year is a week from tonight. June. 10th. Sorry. Also, I just want to report on, we had the Anadagamasin School Board Association meeting was held on May 23rd, and they made a couple announcements. One was the annual dues for that is going to be increasing in the next school year, so we'll have to talk about that if we want to continue. Also, they announced the sales tax distribution for all the school districts. And so, we're going to be getting a little bit more than we anticipated, which is good news. North Syracuse School District, and I think they determine it based on enrollment. It were $312,325.96. Also, Charlie Borgononi is going to be retiring. He announced his retirement for the end of the school year, or the end of the year in December, so they'll be looking for his replacement. And also, thank you for everyone who came out and supported our budget, and we appreciate it.
Oh, I just, since the last meeting, I, as I mentioned it, Board, I put out a letter to the members of the legislative committee and have received some feedback, looking at what we're going to try and do differently next year.
Any comments?
I'd like to say that Dan and I went to the canteen. I hosted an ice cream social for the kids to get some encouragement for them to attend or to visit the canteen. And I'm happy to say that there were 10 new kids that went to visit because. And never play Dan in ping pong.
Just a quick reminder that this Saturday, June 8th, we have our Relay for Life, our third annual, at the CNS High School track, starting at 2:00, running until 10:00. We have a couple of bands coming, Umpteen Time and Viral, along with a high school marching band. We have some string instruments coming in, and we also have a dunk tank that is going to be a couple of dignitaries in. And fun food for all, and bring, come out, bring your friends, neighbors, grandmothers, everybody, have a good time.
Annette?
I have a couple of good news things. First of all, I want to echo what Mary said. Thank you to everyone in the community that came out to exercise their right to vote, and we truly appreciate the support. This year's budget does help us further align our resources to Vision 2020, and there's some great things happening for our students as a result of it, so thank you very much. Right now, as we speak, our girls varsity softball team is, they're playing against Baldwinsville for, looking for their third straight section title. And I have a couple people that I asked to, that are at the game, that I asked to send me a text with an update, but I haven't heard anything yet, so. Find out any good news before this meeting is interrupted with the score. Also, really very honored to report that the CNS Spring Musical, the Drama Club, won four Syracuse High School Theater Awards this past weekend, including Best Overall Musical for the Large School category. In addition to that, they won the Outstanding Performance by an Ensemble and Chorus, Outstanding Production Number for a particular number in Newsies, and Outstanding Vocal Performance by a Cast. So, that's incredible, and if any of you had the opportunity to see that musical this spring, it really is outstanding, as with all other musicals. And I have one other thing here that I did not print off because it came in evening. I received an email over the weekend from a community member who went on and on, this lengthy email, about how impressed she was that our Roxborough Road Middle School marching band marched in the Baldwinsville Memorial Parade. She thought they were so talented, and it was a great presentation and polite, and she had all kinds of wonderful things to say. And I did pass that on today. But also, I received word that that group, the Middle School, Roxborough Road Middle School Parade Band, received a 97.5 at the Sherburne Parade and Best in Class at Competition yesterday. They were competing against junior high schools, and they got first in marching, first in guard, and second place in drum line. So, very talented group, and I think that they'll be moving on up, and our marching band will continue to be of the caliber that it has been. So, thank you to the staff members and all involved. And I think I'm done.
Thanks. Moving into routine action items. Do I have a motion to approve A, B, C, and D as a group? Mike, all in favor? Letter E, contract awards. We have two that have gone out and finished, and one that is currently open. So, the recommended action is to award the contract to Flower City Glass in the amount of $44,536, meeting the minimum specifications for renovation at Roxborough Road Middle. Award contract to Train Supply in the amount of $25,411.68 is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting the specifications for HVAC filters, and to improve insurance of purchase orders to the interscholastic suppliers is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting the specifications when they come in. Oh, all in favor? Discussing action items. A is two.
Okay, so this concern concerns what's known as Section 2201 of the Education Law, and it's a mandatory survey that the State Education Department sends out, asking for our response to different options when there is a vacancy for the district-level superintendent. That you're all aware that Dr. Jody Manning is retiring at the end of the school year. So, that caused the survey to come across. And basically, what they do is to determine whether it's at a point in time where any of the BOSEs should consolidate. And it's my understa -- many years ago, ours already was consolidated, resulting in the OCM, Anadagamasin, Madison BOSEs, and we do have 23 component. Discuss this, and I did send in a response saying that we felt, you know, option one, which is the current state, and not bring any more districts in, and certainly not take out of the area, maybe financial and programming and so forth. So, I wanted you to be. Documents that transpired with.
E is the resolution to abolish and create instructional and civil service positions. So, it's just our annual creation and abolishment of positions based on the designs of the budget for next school year. E is the recommendation to abolish a .5 FTE storekeeper and create a .5 FTE auto mechanic. It is typed up wrong on the title, but the resolution is the correct number. E is the acknowledgement of the 2019-2020 textbook list. E is, we'll take A, B, C, and D as a group. So, do I have a motion to take A, B, C, and D as a group? Paul and Mary, all in favor?
More likely to see an amendment to D, the textbook list, at the next board meeting because I think there's more books that there's still.
Great. F, the, E, the resolution authorizing a settlement of an impartial hearing.
This is legal action that we had previous conversation regarding revision, the parameters for settlement of this case, and the settlement did come in well within those.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution? Paul and Terry, all in favor? F, the establishment of the annual organization meeting of the North Syracuse Central School District. B, the OCM BOSEs Adult and Continuing Education Equivalent of Attendance with equivalence of attendance contract resolution. H, the vehicle bond resolution. I, the revenue anticipation note resolution. I can take those items as a group. Do I have a motion? Terry and George? Surplus of marketable and non-marketable equipment. This is an item. Desks and old.
Mike, can we go back to the vehicle bonding resolution? That has to be a roll call vote.
I apologize. Made the motion for that one? Terry made the motion, and we can do a roll call? Yes? Aye.
Aye.
So, do I have a motion to approve the surplus of marketable and non-marketable equipment? We have a gift this evening. CNS High School and the North Syracuse Junior High School Technology Department received a mini grant in the amount of $260 from the Rochester Institute of Technology for Project Lead the Way to the North Syracuse Central School District. The mini grant will be used to help enhance the PLTW program. Do I have a motion to accept with gratitude the gift from our. George, Terry? We've got one retirement, two retirements listed today. Diane Zaharic is a teaching assistant who's retiring with 20 years of service, and Vincent Love, an accountant too, is retiring with 26 years of service. Great to see Diane here tonight, and we wish both her and Vince happy and healthy retirement. Yes. Moving into personnel, do we need an executive session before we take items A, B, and C? Okay, I'll have a motion to approve A, B, and C as a group? Mike, all in favor? That's unanimous. Do you have anyone out there that just received tenure? Can you stand up? Congratulations on all your hard work. We're happy that you're here. Go ahead, Annette.
So, yes, we do want to say a special congratulations. Receiving tenure in today's day and age, especially in North Syracuse, is certainly a milestone and not just another thing that automatically happens. We're well aware of all that you needed to do to prove that you really are the best of the best and that we want you here for the remainder of your career. So, we're happy that you achieved this, and congratulations for all your hard work.
Okay. Motion for executive session. I will make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on two legal matters relative to potential litigation, to receive an update on negotiations with the North Syracuse Education Association, the Director's Bargaining Unit, and the Teaching Assistance Bargaining Unit, and to review the employment record of five individuals with no action to follow. Do I have a second on that motion? Mary, all in favor? That's unanimous. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.